Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the April 28, 2015, meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Zoning Board of Appeals. The first order of business is to approve some minutes from prior meetings. First, we have the December 10, 2014, minutes. And the only members of the board who were present at that meeting and are still on the board and are present here are Matthew and the two Michaels. So somebody like to make a motion?
To approve those minutes. I concur. One second.
All in favor? So three-nothing. That's unanimous. And the December 10, 2014, meeting minutes are approved. Next, to approve the February 24, 2015 zoning board meeting minutes. And that was the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So who?
Second.
All in favor? All right. And so we have six-nothing on those. I do not believe there's any old business before the board, so we will just move right down to the new business, which is to hear an administrative appeal by Stephen and Jennifer Haynes of the code enforcement officer's decision to require a vacant, nonconforming lot on 28 Woodlawn Road, tax map U-01, Lot 24C, to receive a private accessway approval from the planning board prior to the issuance of a building permit. And before I hear from the appellant, Ben, if you could just give us a quick summary of this issue?
Sure. This is a nonconforming lot in the RC zone. It is approximately 14,370 square feet. It has 40 feet, approximately 40 feet of street frontage on Woodland Road. On July 26, 2012, the former code officer wrote a letter in response to a property owner's request. And in that letter, he stated that a private accessway approval would be required prior to the building permit being issued. Mr. Haynes came and talked to me about the issue, and we discussed different aspects of the zoning ordinance. And, you know, we realized that there is, that the zoning ordinance isn't crystal clear on this subject. And so, you know, he stated that he did not think he needed a private accessway permit based on Section 1943. And that section conflicts somewhat with Section 1979, the section on private accessways. Because there was a letter from the code officer in 2012, in that letter, appeal rights were not written out in that letter. Therefore, I think this request is timely. But that was a formal determination by the code officer. And additionally, there is past precedent that, for the planning board, to review such lots for private accessways. I do think the lot is a buildable lot based on, it is a legally nonconforming lot which are allowed to be built on. The question is, does it first need a private accessway approval from the planning board? Or am I authorized to issue the permit based on Section 1943?
Thank you, Ben.
Sure.
Yes, we can now hear from the appellant.
My name is Bob Danielson. I'm an attorney in Portland, and I live in Cape Elizabeth. And I represent Jennifer and Stephen Haynes. I brought Jennifer with me. Stephen's a merchant marine, and he's out to sea right now, so he couldn't be here. As the code enforcement officer stated, we're here for an interpretation of the zoning ordinance as to whether a building permit on this lot could be issued without the requirement of a private accessway. And as the code enforcement officer also correctly stated, this is a legally existing nonconforming lot. The zoning ordinance addresses legally existing nonconforming lots in Section 19-4, and specifically vacant nonconforming lots, in 19-43. If you look to the language of the ordinance, 1943 governs the use and modification of nonconforming lots in all areas of the town except for shoreland performance and resource protection districts. This is not in either of those districts. This is in an RC district solely. 1943 goes on to state that vacant lots may be built upon even though they do not meet the minimum lot area, net lot area, per dwelling unit, street frontage, or similar requirements as long as they meet the chart set forth below. And in my version of the ordinance, which I printed off just the other day, that's on page 35. I don't know if you have a copy of the ordinance in front of you, but there is a chart in, and it was, I think I attached it to my application, a chart in Section 1943 of the ordinance, which defines all of the requirements of a nonconforming lot, that the nonconforming lot must meet before you can issue a building permit. And in fact, just before the chart, it says, "The code enforcement officer may issue a building permit and related permits and approvals for principal structure and related buildings and structure that do not comply with the setbacks and other space and bulk standards that would otherwise be required in the district in which it is located." So it's taking into account that it's in an RC district, "as long as the following standards are met." Those standards are front setback, side setback, rear setback, minimum lot area, and it goes on to define whether it's with public sewage or without, maximum building coverage. And that's all the requirements of the nonconforming lot under Section 1943. So the applicant wants to design a building that would meet all those setback requirements, and has now been told by the code enforcement officer that they need a private accessway, which does not show up anywhere under 1943 of the ordinance. So I took a look at how 1943 interacts with 1979C, which is the private accessway in the ordinance. First, under Article IV, case law has said that even though provisions permitting nonconforming uses are subject to strict construction, we must never lose sight of the other guideline to the legislative intent. To wit, it's an old case, unless inconsistent with the plain meaning of enactment, words and phrases shall be construed according to the common law meaning of the language. Statutes and ordinance should be read according to the natural and most obvious import of the language without resort to subtle or forced constructions for the purpose of either limiting or extending their operation where there is no manifest legislative intent otherwise." For the lawyers, that's peace be folks in 1929. The reason I bring that up is, the code enforcement officer mentioned in the past that the private accessway has always been the typical way that these have been reviewed. If you look to the language of the ordinance, I don't see a requirement that it be included. And just because it was done in the past doesn't mean it was correct. And looking to the ordinance, because the Hayneses did make an application in 2012, in fact, my office drafted it for them, and when it came back and said it needed a private accessway, I spoke to them, and they said, gee, I don't know if we can afford that right now. It doesn't make sense for us. As the code enforcement officer also correctly pointed out, our rights were not barred at that point, so they decided to do nothing. They came to me recently and said, could you please relook at this? We'd really like to build our house on this back lot. So we went back, and I said, gee, I really don't think that this private accessway is required. So I also sat down with the code enforcement officer, and we discussed it. And you saw his letter, which was in my, in response to my letter. If you look at Section 7, I'm sorry, Section 1979, that talks about tools that the planning board can utilize to assist further development in the town. It talks about a variety of different mechanisms for lots that may or may not meet the requirements. And it's very permissive. But it says, "The purpose is to incorporate tools into the ordinance to better enable the town to implement its policies while respecting the rights of property owners." Well, this property owner has complied with the nonconforming section of the ordinance, which is totally exclusive of a private accessway. There's no mention in this chart of private accessways or other requirements, or go back to the space and bulk requirements of the section, of the RC district. This nonconforming section of the ordinance is totally exclusive to nonconforming vacant lots. So there's nothing that cross-references. So when I looked at Section, Article 7, and I said, where are they going with this private accessway? It appears to be that if the minimum street frontage on an otherwise conforming lot is not available, the planning board has the opportunity or the ability to grant somebody a private accessway to assist them in obtaining a building permit. It's not one of these cases where you shall do this. It says the planning board may. It says the planning board has the ability to allow. Those aren't obligatory, that's not obligatory language. It's not something where you're going to come in and say, you can't do this because you didn't get that. It says the planning board may allow this because it's going to help you facilitate your development. Okay? Nonconforming lots do not need to meet the space and bulk requirements of Article 6. If you look to Article 7, Article 7 starts by saying, where you cannot meet the space and bulk requirements of Article 6, we are going to help you. So these sections are not inconsistent. They're mutually exclusive. One deals with nonconforming, one deals with the space and bulk requirements. So when you look at overlapping them, you're taking them out of context and basically doubling up on requirements. And don't forget, a zoning ordinance is police power. So where you look to a zoning ordinance, if it's not prohibited, it's permitted. There was a case, actually, it is Prentice versus Cape Elizabeth, 2003, and I don't think any of you were on the board at that time. It deals with a lot on Ocean Avenue, which is down by Two Lights. And the entire case hinged on whether the language in the ordinance said that you must comply with Sections 2 and 3 of the ordinance. And it was also a nonconforming lot case. And Section 2 and 3 of the ordinance basically had different requirements from each other. So what they meant to say was, you should comply with Section 2 or 3. And the ordinance was actually subsequently changed to include that. But the reason I bring all this up is, is that the court said, when interpreting the statute, the court examines the plain meaning of the statutory language to affect a legislative intent and construes the language to avoid absurd or illogical results. Now, as I was going through this, I said, well, that's not really a case on point, but I'm going to mention it because it's Cape Elizabeth. And two, because you look at these two sections of the ordinance, and you say, these two sections that we're looking at could overlap and apply. You could apply all your standards to something, but the court said, that's not what you should be doing. You should be looking to see if the application applies to those portions of the ordinance that are applicable, and sometimes, you're not going to have to double up. The final comment that the building inspector raised in his letter was that our Section 943 and 1979C in conflict, because they both require things relating to the driveways. And Section 19-10-1 says that where their provisions are inconsistent, the more restrictive provision, more restrictive and specific provision shall apply. Code enforcement officer went on to state that he thought that Section 1979C was the more restrictive. I respectfully disagree for the following reason. If you look at the two sections of the ordinance, I've said, and this is my primary argument, they are mutually exclusive. They're not inconsistent. The nonconforming lots are dealt with in Article 4. That's the whole purpose of Article 4. Article 7 is meant to be a planning board tool for, as I further said, places where the ordinance would otherwise allow a building permit, but for whatever reason, in this particular instance, frontage only, you wouldn't have that. They can continue to exist. They have different purposes. Article 4 is actually much more restrictive than Article 7 for the following reasons. Article 4 says that it shall govern the use and modification of nonconforming lots. A nonconforming lot may be built upon even though it does not meet the minimum lot area, net lot area, street frontage, or similar requirements as long as the requirements of this chap, of this chart are met, and that's my chart on page 35. The CEO may issue a building permit for a structure that does not meet the setback and bulk standards that would otherwise be required in the district it is located, so long as the chart is met. They say that twice in the same chapter. In fact, if you look at the bottom of page 34 and the middle of page 35, it almost recites the same sentence. The reason that's important is, it's telling you that it's exclusive. It says, "A building permit may be issued based upon the following criteria, which are set forth in the chart." Section 1979C is different. It allows the planning board to approve the development of an individual lot lacking required street frontage. The planning board may approve the creation and development of one lot if it finds the lot complies with the standards of Section 1979D4, which is a litany of sections. So the result of Section 9, 1979C, is more onerous than the result of 1943. However, the impetus of 1943 is much more significant, because if you look to main statutory law, and this is one MRSA, Section 71-9A, shall and must are terms of equal weight and indicate mandatory duty or action. May indicates authorization or permission to act. Those are specifically set forth to allow people like you to interpret the zoning ordinance in that the stricter sections of the zoning ordinances are the ones with the shall, not the ones with the may. And clearly, a nonconforming lot has a lot of shalls in Article 4, and there's very few in Section 1979. Therefore, based upon the foregoing, the applicant or appellant requests that this board modify the decision of the code enforcement officer to remove any requirement that the appellant obtain a private accessway permit prior to qualifying for a building permit. We're here to answer any questions, and thank you.
So here's where I'm struggling a little bit with the argument, and maybe you can help me out. What, if I'm understanding what you're saying, it's that the provisions of Article 4 provide and set forth all of the standards applicable to construction on nonconforming lots, in that they provide space and bulk standards. And therefore, those provisions in Article 4 are mutually exclusive of the provisions in Article 7, which are entitled general provisions, which include provisions, such as the one at issue for accessways, but also for corner clearances, off-street parking, creation of accessory dwelling units, creation of temporary structures. So if we were to agree with your argument, my understanding is that construction on nonconforming lots would be subject to far fewer standards, just simple space and bulk standards, not even height restrictions, which all other normal construction in the Cape, town of Cape Elizabeth, is subject to. So that's what I'm struggling with in terms of your argument, that those two are mutually exclusive.
That may, excuse me, that may be correct. But I'm taking the ordinance at face value, and I'm looking at Article 4. And Article 4 is telling me such things as, "The following provision shall govern the use and modification of nonconforming lots." It doesn't say shall govern, plus go back and find the space and bulk requirements, plus determine whether you need to meet any of the requirements of Section 197. 197 clearly states at its outset, "These are tools to assist the planning board where there may be otherwise problems." And Section 79 says, right in its preamble, that these are where they don't meet the space and bulk requirements of Article 6. Article 4 says, you don't even get to the space and bulk requirements of Article 6. You stop at this chart on page 35 and meet a front yard, set yard, a front yard, side yard, rear yard, minimum lot coverage. That's it.
So you're conceding that if we were to agree with this argument, that all that would be necessary for construction on a nonconforming lot is compliance with the simple space and bulk standards that are in Article 4?
That is all the ordinance requires.
Okay.
How do you explain the reference, actually, in 194 to 196 standards?
Which sentence are you referring to?
We're looking at, you're looking at the chart, and in the RC districts, you'll see that there is reference, in fact, to the 196 standards.
Nope. Not that, that section.
On the front setback.
That section right here says, "With respect to front setback for principal structures, you've got to, in an RC district, you've got to comply as required by Section 1963E as to front setback, not as to all standards, not as to private accessways, not as to driveways, only as to front setback." There's nothing else. So if I meet my front setback, which I take from the chart in 1963E, and I have a 10-foot side setback and a 15-foot rear setback, and 10,000 feet with public sewage and a maximum building coverage of 25 percent, I get a building permit.
Clearly, there is a reference right here in 194 to 196. So they're not mutually exclusive, you can argue.
Only, they are. Only as to the front yard setback. If the front yard setback is determined according to 1963, all of the other requirements are not applicable.
Well, doesn't that make for looser standards with respect to even the space and bulk standards? For example, if you look at 196, there is a maximum building height standard. There is no maximum building height standard in 194. So could your client build a 100-foot building under your argument?
The zoning ordinance has to be read according to what the zoning ordinance says. The code enforcement officer is certainly entitled to interpret that. If it has no maximum height restriction in the nonconforming lot section, maybe the zoning ordinance has to be changed to address it.
You're aware of the longstanding body of case law stating that the role of zoning, one of the primary roles of zoning, is to work to eliminate nonconformity.
Absolutely.
And you're aware that one of the primary reasons that ordinances contain provisions regarding nonconformance is to be very specific regarding the instances in which they may be allowed. And it is a general principle of ordinance construction, in my experience, that provisions in the nonconformity section are supplemental to the other provisions of the ordinance, particularly where those provisions are labeled general provisions, applicable to, as the planning board may see fit and as the town may see fit.
Then why does Section 1943A1 say, "The code enforcement officer shall issue a building permit, blah, 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 as long as the following standards are met." Issue a building permit. Does not say that he should then go back and determine whether it complies with the balance of the ordinance. Does not say that it has to meet other requirements of the ordinance. It says, "The code enforcement officer may issue a building permit if," and the standards are set forth very simply.
So you're arguing that they could build, under this, under our ordinance, under your argument, they could build an 100-story building on that lot?
I have no idea whether they could build 100 stories. I'm not asking for 100 stories.
You're saying, you're saying the only requirements for that building are set forth in 1943-1A.
That's what the ordinance says. I'm not interpreting it. I'm reading.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair, for clarification, Chair. You're suggesting that this interpretation would allow further nonconformance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for now?
I had a follow-up point, just for clarification purposes. Could you help me understand the, how your client is standing to bring this particular action today as to what happened in 2012? In the lapse of time, what is new in this current process that would allow you to have standing?
Okay. We inquired of the building, code enforcement officer in 2012, what requirements would be necessary to build on this lot. We made an informal request. Here are some facts. Can you please interpret these for us and help us determine what we need to do? He sent us back a letter that said, here's the answer to your questions. He did not say, this is my decision, and these decisions are binding, and you have 30 days to appeal. So we basically cataloged that letter, didn't do anything, weren't required to do anything, weren't required to appeal, weren't required to do anything. We now are completing the process, which we're totally legally within our rights to do. And we brought the same argument back based upon our interpretation of the ordinance. Code enforcement officer sat down with me and reviewed everything and said, you know what? I think you're entitled to continue your application. And now, he said, but, I'm going to ask you to make it formal, which we did, and I'm going to ask you to, if I have a determination that it's binding, which we agree. And now, we've brought an appeal of that decision within the 30 days we were allowed to.
Thank you.
Got a question? Could you give me an example of a situation where the private accessway standards would apply?
Would? If I have a lot If I have a lot that otherwise meets the zoning requirements, but has a shortage of frontage because there’s either been an eminent domain or some other third-party circumstance where I don’t have sufficient frontage.
Nonconforming?
It’s not necessarily. It could be nonconforming, but it’s not necessarily nonconforming otherwise. And there are many instances where you’ll have a lot of that size.
Any further questions for Attorney Danielson at this time?
All right. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to comment or present on this matter?
Sir, could you, no, sir, could you state your name and what the document you just passed out? This is a...
Just to help you follow the points that I’m trying to make.
It’s unlikely to be part of the record because...
That’s perfectly fine. Yep. Does not have to be. Yep. No, it was just talking points. My name is Brad Norris. I live at 26 Woodland Avenue, Woodland Road, right behind the property. And this is hard because we’ve been good neighbors with Haynes. I’m the person that’s maintained the property beside my house, which this accessway would go onto. Been doing it for several years, ever since I lived there. But when I bought the house, I looked at it. I looked at the ordinances, and as far as I was concerned, it wasn’t a buildable lot. And that’s one of the reasons I bought the property, was that I assumed it wasn’t buildable. It, in fact, that property was attached to my property at the time, same owners. And I declined to purchase it because I said, “Nobody’s going to be able to build on it anyways. Doesn’t really have a lot of value. Maybe in a few years, when I have a little extra equity, I’ll approach the owners and say, ‘I’ll buy it from you just to have it there.’” Because there was serious interest at the time to keep it forever while. I actually met with Steve Haynes at one point, and he told me that the neighbors were talking about getting together to buy the lot, to keep it forever while. I said I would be extremely interested in participating with that. Unfortunately, the next thing I knew, he bought the lot. I have no idea whether he bought it as a nonbuildable lot, and how he’s trying to make a serious profit on it, or whether he paid the price of a buildable lot, I have no idea. But this is, that’s the history of my property. So I went through and I researched it. And by the way, I don’t know any place in the world where you get to pick and choose the codes that you want to follow. As far as I’m concerned, code is code. I work in the fire protection business, and we follow codes every single day, and every code in that codebook applies to my projects. And so I’ve never seen somebody go through and say, “Well, no, that doesn’t apply.” So I went through and I looked at code Article One, the scope and purpose of definitions. And for 19-1-2, it clearly states, “To prevent overcrowding of real estate, to promote a wholesome home environment, to conserve natural and cultural resources, to enhance the value of property.” I went to Article Seven, 19-7-1, that the attorney referenced so often, and the intent of that is to preserve open space and rural character. Then I went to Article Four, nonconformance, and it said, “The intent of this ordinance is to promote land use conformity.” This is not a conformant. This is, this building would be in the backyards of 11 different properties. Show me where else in Cape Elizabeth you see something like that. And why do I bring all that up? Is because when you get to Article Five, Zoning Board of Appeals, Under Powers and Duties, it says that they can grant variances from the terms of this ordinance, provided that there is no substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance. Well, I just read you what the intent of all those ordinances are, and it seems to me to go smack in the face of what the intentions of those were. Then as we get into that same section, 19-5-2, “The granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood.” Anybody that’s been in this neighborhood will tell you it would totally change it. When I first moved into that house, I remember waking up the first morning and saying to my wife, “Listen,” and she said, “What? Children out playing out in that property.” It really is, it is an absolute resource to our neighborhood. It goes on to say, “It will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of abutting properties.” Really? You don’t think my property value isn’t going to decrease substantially once the house is in my backyard? Or eliminating the privacy of adjoining property without an effort to mitigate the lost privacy? We’re going to be looking out our back windows, right into their windows. I don’t know what plan has been made to mitigate privacy. Now, as we get back to Article Seven, General Standards, 19-7-1, and this is where I would disagree with the attorney, because he kept saying that these tools are to assist. He said it four different times. No, read it. These tools are designed to achieve these goals while respecting the rights of property owners. That’s all property owners, not just the ones going for the variance. And the tools are helped to design them, not to assist them. Then we get another section, 19-7-9, Under Private Accessways. This section allows a planning board to approve the development of an individual lot lacking the required street frontage. If adequate access is provided to the lot, the development is carried out in a manner that minimizes the impact on adjacent properties and is consistent with sound neighborhood development. There’s absolutely no way this is consistent with sound neighborhood development. Then I reference, and this will be an issue once they try to build, the Code of Main Rules, O6-096, from the Department of Environmental Protection. It says that “Any grading or other construction activity in the site will cause no unreasonable alteration of natural drainage rates.” I only have three copies of these. First two photographs show the, how the...
I’ll slide them down.
Okay, great. The first, the first two photographs show steep inclines of all other property owners that go down on this property. The third one was taken just last week. I don’t possibly see how they can create natural drainage off of that property. It just is not going to happen unless it means suddenly now all our basements are going to start being flooded. Where is that water going to go? Other questions need to be answered. Is Highland Road a paper street? There was a development built many, many years ago that had a road which, where this accessway would be built. Actually, I can show you. It comes right down from there to the dollar. I have here maps of the, of that development when it was done, which clearly shows that it’s there. I’ll gladly pass that out later on. And everybody I’ve talked to in Cape Elizabeth has said, “Cape hasn’t given back any paper streets. So how did it suddenly no longer become a paper street?” This has got to be, this question absolutely has to be answered before any permits can be given. As far as I can see, it is. I know that they’re claiming that they got clear title to it, but mistakes are made on title searches all the time. That’s why they encourage you to buy title insurance. What about the sewer system? Can it even accept it? Most of my neighbors have had roster would back up into their basements over the years. Can it take another home? Who covers the cost of the fails? And what about the sewer lines that are going to run under this accessway right now? What I thought was a paper street. Everybody thought it was a paper street. In fact, the Haynes thought it was a paper street, because on July 13th, 2012, they sent a letter stating that they would like to, that they would like to use the paper street. That was later rejected. I don’t know where the change happened. You know, as far as, as far as what the attorney arguments are, it’s a silly notion that order of code being enforceable must be repeated in different sections. That’s one of the things he said in his letter. Once again, do they really think they can go and cherry pick the codes they want to do? Our code enforcement officer recognized that it was obvious we’d need an accessway and that that would also have to be met. What good would a building permit do without that accessway? So in conclusion, this project goes directly against the intentions of the codes. It would create overcrowding of real estate. It would be unlike almost any other property in Cape Elizabeth that is totally nonconforming. It would take away open spaces and destroy rural character, would destroy a natural and cultural resource. It would completely change the character of the neighborhood forever. It is anything but sound neighborhood development. It destroys the privacy of every abutting neighbor. It reduces the value of the property of every abutting neighbor and is doubtful that a developed property could ever achieve natural water drainage without adversely affecting neighbors. And then, of course, serious questions about whether or not the sewer can hold up. I wasn’t able to get any answers to that this week. It’s obviously going to take, you know, when you see those pictures of the water, standing water, there’s obviously going to take extensive engineering studies before any permit should be issued. And by the way, all these codes were in place when that property was purchased. If they didn’t research it, then I really feel bad if they paid the full price, truly. I do. But they were there. I know I researched it before I even thought about putting an offer in, and I assume they would have as well. Mr. McGugl is working in the best interest for the majority of property owners, not just one. They are indeed using the tools provided to them to make sure that the codes are followed and this project is done correctly, and nothing is done until that’s been assured. Projects like this are exactly why codes are written, and they’re not written to just rubber stamp them to everyone who applies. That’s about all I have to say. Have any questions for me?
From your testimony, you’re saying that you were adverse to this application?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a point, that you mentioned that the lot is not buildable. We have to, one determination in one letter from the previous code enforcement officer suggesting that it is a buildable lot. So that is an issue. So when you make the comments, that’s the clarification I want to make on that.
You know, when I see, the reason we write these codes in the first place is to prevent something like this from happening. So when I see that it’s in the code, that it doesn’t meet the frontage, then I just assume they’ve got to go get a variance in order to do that, and that a process like this would occur. And it has, and so I’m very happy with that.
And when you originally looked at purchasing the property, on the map that’s in front of the lectern there, what piece were you looking to buy?
Oh, I would have bought the entire thing if I was going to...
What is the entire thing?
It’s this...
There are two deeds that are part of this application.
Correct. This is my pocket here.
Yes.
The one that was...
Right. So at the time...
And I would have bought any, I would have had value and split it up as the other eight is one. Some of that question, I would have taken the question.
My query is, at the time of considering the purchase in the property, was it always considered two pieces, two deeds? Or it was the larger piece behind the homes that you were considering purchasing?
I do not...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Mark Mercerow, and I live at 17 Charles Road. And I’m one of the property owners with my wife Marie that abuts the south boundary of the property in question. First, I have to say, I do not relish speaking in opposition of a neighbor, a neighbor’s plans or desires. And the reason I choose to rise up tonight and speak was to uphold the zoning intent for my family, my neighbors, and future inhabitants of the Charles Road, Woodland Road neighborhood. And I’ve always looked upon myself, when I find myself in these beautiful settings, I lived in Newport, Rhode Island also, as a steward of the place where I’m living. I believe that granting this variance would lead to building a house on the lot in question, or I believe that building, that allowing the variance, which would lead to the building of a house in this property, would violate the intent of ordinance Article Four, Nonconformance, 19-4, in five ways. Cause overcrowding of real estate, destroy natural resources, take away the open space and rural character, reduce the market value of abutting properties, and eliminate the privacy of an adjoining property. And further, it was my belief that my neighbors, including Jen and Steve Haynes, shared a vision of using this common lot for a play area for children, a buffer for peace and quiet, and a common space for neighborhood activities. And we’d spoken about it at neighborhood get-togethers. And so it’s that vision that’s sort of reflected in the intent that I believe that’s in the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance that I would like to preserve.
Thank you.
I’m Marie Mercerow, Mark’s wife, and also at 17 Charles Road. Just to be clear, this is all property which it was. I would have had any use of property. And is, in a neighborly fashion, we just like to see the value of the property maintained. I think when you look at buildings on a structure, you have to say, “Is that going to be detriment to the community, or is it going to enhance?” And I certainly think, in this case, it will not enhance it at all. And I think it will bring the value of our property down, as well as all the other abutting properties. So I do, I am adverse to having this built.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Derek Converse. I’m at 11 Charles.
Is this property right here?
I think Brad and Mark and Marie have already kind of touched on everything. There’s just a couple of things that are concerning for me. Like Brad had mentioned, the lot is essentially the low spot between all of the properties surrounding it. So drainage and grading is a major concern. There are definitely times when there’s some minor flooding that occurs in some of those areas. So off-site drainage issues, those would be big concerns if they have to build it up, or however they handle that. The other thing is, again, like Brad said, you know, this is built in everybody’s backyard. Literally, everybody’s backyard will be facing this property. And obviously, that’s a concern, you know? And it’s, we’re looking downhill onto it. So it’s one of those where everybody’s backyard looks downhill onto a house. So I don’t know if I can say much more than what they said, but I just, you know, this is hard for me too, because I do like Steve and Jen, and I certainly don’t like confrontation. But this is, I’m opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Dave Connor. I live at 13 Charles Road, which is opposite... So it’s hard for me. My parents bought the house that actually I resided now back in 1979. I was the last house on the road, so I’ve seen a lot of change. In fact, Mark and Marie’s house and a couple of the neighbors built, and it was a bit of mess with that development too. And to see this last bastion of woods go, it’s unfortunate, because I have a relationship with the Hayneses too, our children, our friends, you know, we all live in pretty close proximity. And I too, like many others, don’t relish confrontation. And my pleas are certainly mostly emotional versus practical. I mean, all the practical issues that have been stated are concerns. Property value, drainage, general aesthetics. But I suppose mostly for me, the hardest part is watching that last little bit of neighborhood forever change, and just not knowing what that will, you know, what that ultimately will look like. And, you know, some of the factors brought up with the nonconformance, I guess I didn’t recognize either that that could affect just exactly what could be built, you know? Again, it’s hard to imagine the woods being anything more than they are now. And, you know, I’m an astatistician, I would say, to a degree, and I will look, my kitchen will look directly out on whatever is there. And so that’s just, the whole thing is a concern, a little sad for me. So that’s really all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Peter Eastman of 24 Woodland Road. I think it would be a shame to put another house in there. It is a good little open space. The kids have enjoyed playing back there and shortcutting through that area, and probably coming home with poison ivy. If you go take a look at it, I suggest you be prepared for that. I doubt if it would really bother me much at having turned 88. I don’t think I’ll have to put up with any noise or inconvenience back there for very long. But I think it would be, it’s a nice little spot to leave. But I think it would be, it's a nice little spot to leave bare. That's one of the things about Cape Elizabeth. My farm, Turkey Hill Farm, out by shore acres, I have put in the conservation easement so it will not be built upon. As a matter of fact, I'm in the process of giving the whole shebang to the Cape Land Trust to be used for someone as it is now with cultivating community and farm camp, but as a 25 acres for eternity to be used for the public interest out there. I think this little plot behind my house there and all these other people's houses could just as well stay as it is and be sort of a little asset. As a matter of fact, when I saw the sign go up, I thought, well, I got to get the neighbors together and come talk to what's her name upstairs and find out what the property's worth, and perhaps gang up together and buy the property and put it into conservation easement. But as with a lot of things, things happen tomorrow and tomorrow will never come. But I hope that they'll not build on that little thing. I thought there was a right of way into the property as it was beside the 26. I'm surprised to hear some discussion about access, because I forget the name of the predecessor in there. Do you happen to know who the previous people were?
Hanson.
Hanson, yeah. I knew it began with H, but I could come up with it as Hannigan and that was another neighbor in Massachusetts. So I hope that one way or another, it'll stay as it is, poison ivy and all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Attorney Danielson, would you like some time for rebuttal?
Reference was made to a public way or Highland Road that runs across the street, and we reviewed with the city, with the town, and in the registry of deeds, and had a complete title of this, the town of Cape Elizabeth never acquired any rights in that road. However, the lots that were created on Woodland Road were created pursuant to a plan. The plan was drawn up and recorded in 1898. That plan provides that everyone on that road has the rights of a private lot owner to use that road as laid out on the plan. The main law also provides that the owners that have the right to use that road can continue to use that road, including putting utilities down that road. So my client plans on using their portion of that road as a driveway, and there will be no construction on the part that is still the private way. But they're certainly entitled to use that portion of the road for their purposes consistent with our application. So I just wanted to clarify that. There are private rights, no public rights, and the use of the road by the Hayneses will be consistent with the private rights of others. Thank you.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
So what you're saying is that all of the owners in that lot, in that neighborhood, have similar rights in that access?
Any neighbors that had their lot laid out as shown on that 1898 plan have certain rights in that road, and we're not impeding on those rights.
Mm-hmm. But that would be open to decision by someone other than us, certainly.
That's correct.
That's not something that we would decide, but certainly it could determine the scope of everyone's rights in that access.
Right. And I hope the board bears in mind that we're here for the very narrow issue of asking whether the driveway to this otherwise buildable lot requires a private access way. Thank you.
I just want to follow up a point. Does that mean that if you put in the private access, yes please, the accessway, that means the other people that have rights to it are obligated to pay some of the cost for the access right?
Oh, if it was only true. No. If you improve a private accessway, which you're entitled to do, you have to bear the cost.
It's not town property. The town has no responsibility. It's not. And the person who, the person of interest chooses to make an accessway fronts the cost.
That's correct.
Even though the other people have a right?
They have the right to continue to cross it, and we can't impede that right. But if we choose to improve it, now, there is statutory reference that says we don't even need to own it to improve it. However, my client does have fee title to that 40 feet of frontage on Woodland Road, and according to main law, statutory main law, they can improve that road to the extent necessary to bring utilities and a driveway down to their house.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
But so could all the other easement holders, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay. Now move to the board discussion portion. I guess before we get into the substantive issue, does anybody want to discuss standing? I know Matthew had at least raised it during the presentation.
It's jurisdiction for me. So I see the 2012 letter as merely not a conclusionary basis. It could have been a better draft, but that's just one of those things. The applicant was now on notice. I suspect that a fee was paid, if there was a fee required for this to come before us. So I'm content with the issue on standing.
Everybody else? Okay. Anybody like to start the discussion on the substantive issue at hand? Any initial thoughts, inclinations, one direction or another?
I'm troubled with this interpretation, because I see it as a potential, theoretical anyways, of creating more nonconformity, and that's troubling. I take Stanley's point that there's a reference, a parallel reference in that section. The language doesn't, it's not consistent, but to interpret one way makes it, not absurd, but really peculiar results could result.
To my mind, it's totally inconsistent with the ordinance to interpret the ordinance to state that all that new construction on a nonconforming lot has to comply with is the space and bulk requirements for nonconforming structures. No height restrictions. You can put as many principal buildings on there as you want, because those, the number, the limit on the number of principal buildings on a lot is also in the general standards. You can have whatever you want for access. You can have whatever you want in terms of accessory buildings. This makes no sense to me.
No road frontage and no real loan rights, even...
Right, right. I tend to agree.
The title of Article VII is general standards, which seems to me to by its very nature mean that it applies to everything that is in there, including nonconforming structures, which are by their very definition supposed to be held to the highest...
Highest standards.
Sorry, nonconforming lots.
Wouldn't they, so looking at Section 1943 where it says vacant nonconforming lots may be built upon in conformance with the provisions of the district in which they're located, doesn't that... Wouldn't that bring in some of those general standards?
It would bring in the height standard, which is in the RC zone, but it wouldn't pull in necessarily the general standards. Because those aren't district-based. They're kind of for everything.
For everything. Yep.
I mean, it sounds like we're all safely leaning toward the conclusion that Section 19-10 one does in fact apply, and that the provisions here, interpretation is so wildly inconsistent with so many provisions of the ordinance that we couldn't really possibly
I am having some trouble with section, maybe it's just the wording of 1979, private accessways. It talks about how the planning board may approve the creation or development on a lot lacking frontage. But I'm having trouble with what triggers planning board review for a lot like this?
If they submit an application for private access, that jurisdictional pathway opens, and there's a full hearing process by which that happens. And then if that process is approved, and a building permit is required, my understanding is, and another application is submitted to the CEO for determination?
I mean, so would 1979C private accessways always apply when you're looking to build on a nonconforming lot?
Only if it was nonconforming with regard to street frontage.
With regard to street frontage. So effectively, this is not their only bite at the apple. They can go back to the, if we deny this, they can go to the planning board, fix the frontage, and then come back and apply for a permit.
They just have to apply for a private accessway permit from the planning board. That's the fix here. They were applying to the code enforcement officer, saying, just give us a building permit with no planning board approval. And the building inspector said, well, we think that you need a public accessway permit from the planning board. And so they're coming to us, saying, do we or don't we?
And certainly, the planning board has the jurisdiction to assess the original plan of 18 whatever, and also take account of the abutting neighbors and their concerns, and perhaps require anything else that needs to be done.
Yeah, I just want to point something out to the public. I heard several times reference to a variance, and we may be granting a variance tonight. That's in fact not what is happening. We're looking at what standards may apply, and if we determine that the private accessway standards do apply, it'll go to the planning board if the applicant chooses to pursue that. So we're not, while I appreciate the concerns about whether or not it's appropriate to build on this lot for environmental reasons or for just general, you know, health of the neighborhood, that's not necessarily what we're looking at tonight. Any other comments or discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion? Don't all speak at once.
I move we uphold the April 1st, 2015 code enforcement officer decision to require a private accessway permit prior to issuance of a building permit for this project.
Second. Any discussion?
Sorry, clarifications. It's perhaps you have to apply to the planning board, and then it's for the planning board to determine whether there is a permit to be issued. Is that correct? So I was thinking that we're making a conclusion before a set of circumstances have been submitted to the planning board.
Well, we're hearing an appeal of the code enforcement officer's decision that it had to go to the planning board for a private accessway permit. And so my motion was that we uphold his decision that that does have to happen.
So any discussion on this motion?
I have my case.
All in favor? So we've got six in favor. Or, oh, you are in favor, sorry. In favor of the motion. So that's seven. So seven in favor, so it passes unanimously. I'll go forward and read the findings of fact. This is an administrative appeal of the code enforcement officer's decision letter dated April 1st, 2015 regarding a nonconforming lot at 28 Woodland Road, map U01, Lot 24C. The applicants are Stephen and Jennifer Haynes of 31 Warren Avenue. Stephen and Jennifer Haynes agreed in 2013 to combine lots 24C and 24D into one nonconforming lot, map U01, Lot 24C. The subject lot is in the RC zone. It is approximately 14,370 square feet, and it has approximately 40 feet of street frontage. On July 26th, 2012, Bruce Smith, while acting as the code enforcement officer, wrote a letter in response to a request from Stephen and Jennifer Haynes's attorney stating that a private accessway permit is needed from the planning board prior to a building permit being issued because the lot does not meet the minimum street frontage requirement in the zoning ordinance. On April 1st, 2015, the present code enforcement officer upheld the former code enforcement officer's decision to require a private accessway permit prior to the issuance of a building permit.
I have a clarification. I think the 2012 is not a decision.
I agree. So let's say that...
Or should not be interpreted as a decision.
So let's change, so just in number six, on April 1st, 2015...
Decision to letter.
The present code enforcement officer upheld the former code enforcement officer's interpretation?
Sure.
Reiterated? I don't know. Or should we just say decided?
So yes, they would be a fresh assessment.
So that last one that begins on April 1st is now going to read, on April 1st, 2015, the present code enforcement officer decided to, decided to require a private accessway permit prior to the issuance of a building permit. So we're going with option two. Based on Section 19-7-9C, the applicant is required to obtain a private accessway permit from the planning board prior to the issuance of a building permit. The decision is to uphold the code enforcement officer's decision dated April 1st, 2015. And again, in terms of the findings of fact, all in favor of the findings of fact? Seven, nothing? Thank you for your time. Next order of business, any communications for the board? Somebody like to move to adjourn?
So move.
All right. We are adjourned.